Charlie Masterburty.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner, Andrew Urbanowitz.
Here.
Lynn Schull.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
James Bailey Brislin.
As we've not been made aware of any of executive session, we'll move on to the next one. For those in the audience, in the event of a fire, you have two means of egress from this room. First is out this door, take an immediate left, down the stairs, out into the parking lot. The second egress is through the back of the chambers, out the doors, onto a landing, down the steps, and out onto the town green. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
My pledge of legions.
Legions to flag the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the members of the audience, quickly give you a brief summary of how we're going to conduct business tonight. The secretary will read your legal notice. You'll be asked to come before us at the table. State your name and address for the record. You have an opportunity to present your application. The board most likely will ask questions. When completed, we will open up the floor to the audience to speak in favor or against the application. If the audience does speak, then the applicant will have final opportunity to speak. Any additional information that you believe we may not have in our packets, you need to present to us when your public hearing is open. Once your public hearing is closed, we cannot accept any other information for consideration. Comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the commission's statutory or regulatory authority will not be considered by the commission in reaching its decision. And for the record, a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, where a strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties, and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed and financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting the variance. Once you've presented your application, we will most likely vote on it tonight, so you'll know where you stand with this board, but you will receive written documentation from the town. Pursuant to state statutes, a regular member who is going to be absent has the opportunity to seat an alternate member in their place if they're not going to be able to attend. I received a call this morning from Mola Rosa, and he has appointed Lynn Schull to act as a regular member tonight. That being said, Madam Secretary.
Public notice, Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals. The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearings Monday, May 25, 2012, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning ZBA 2012-06-01, Thomas W. Cedar, applicant owner, 22 Pleasant Road, MAP 14, Lot 16, R33 Zone. Appeal of Order of Decision of Zoning Official for Home Occupation and Trailer Parking, EZO Section 2.30, 4.20, and 10.10.1G. Dated this 11th day of June 2012, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal Inquirer, June 13, 2012, and June 19, 2012.
The applicant, come forward.
Mr. Chair, I received a phone call late this afternoon from Mr. Cedar, and he said he might not be able to make it tonight. He wasn't sure, but I don't see him in the audience.
Okay. Is there anyone here that's representing him? As there is none. Is there a motion on the floor to continue this public hearing?
So.
Excuse me.
Don't you have to have, open it up to the public? You have to open it up to the public, Mr. Chair?
The floor, it is open. We are open. She read the legal notice.
I know, but I think someone wants to.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this application?
Yes.
Please come forward.
My name is Mary Finelli.
Wait. Just make sure the red light is on, on your microphone.
Okay. Can you hear me?
You need to sit down.
Oh, it was on, sorry.
And pull the microphone in a little closer.
I live directly next door to Tom Cedar and am vehemently opposing him having any type of a home occupancy on any given day. I have photos of what his yard looks like.
Sure. Can you just pull your microphone in just closer to you?
Okay. Is that better?
Better.
Okay. On any given day, and I can bring these up to you if you'd like, I have a series of photos of what his yard looks like, between debris from his jobs to commercial machinery being out. He has a habit of starting up the big diesel trucks anywhere from 5:30 on in the morning. They're very loud. They are extremely disruptive to what used to be a very quiet neighborhood. Because of the way that he keeps his property, he has taken away the neighborhood's quaintness. It is a complete disruption. It is, to be honest with you, it is a nightmare to have to look at that on a daily basis. I'm not sure what more I could do other than, I can bring these up. Sorry. You can look at these photos. The other consideration to not grant him a business permit is the decreasing property value. I have done some research. I've talked to a few realtors. And with the way that the yard is kept, the property has gone down an additional 18% to 25% in value. Resale is virtually a complete loss. There are several roofing companies that operate out of their house. I've had the addresses. I've taken drive-bys. And they have kept the integrity of the neighborhood intact by not having a yard that looks like that. The last two photos are of buildings that he has constructed within five feet of the property line. So I'm guessing he never pulled a permit, but he is storing commercial supplies, machinery in them. I'm not sure the legality of all of that, whether or not those are going to be considered accessory buildings. But as you can see, that's the only property in the neighborhood that looks like that. It's an embarrassment, and quite honestly, it's dangerous.
Anything else?
No, that pretty much is it. I mean, he has had the business going since he bought the house in 2008. He only recently applied for a permit. And he is not keeping in, you know, following the requirements from the Department of Environmental Protection with the diesel trucks, the loudness of the trucks running from, you know, 5:30 on in the morning. It's a quiet neighborhood. You can hear anything. And that is the first thing you hear. Keeps them running. The ladders, you can see he's probably got, I'm guessing, 12 to 15 feet high scaffolding for ladders, you know, sliding them off, sliding them on, dropping them, slamming them any time of the day, in the morning, even as, you know, as late as 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. Complete disruption. When asked to clean up the yard, it brought us here. He refused to do it. So with the character of this gentleman, he has completely taken away any type of serene atmosphere in the neighborhood. It's, you know, with the people that he has working for him, coming and going. Sometimes there's cars parked up and down the street. It just takes away from the complete character of the neighborhood, not only of, you know, the property that it once was, and would like to see that restored back. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you give a brief description of what's in that packet to enter into the public hearing?
There's a summary of definitions that are put in here, two pages. And there's one, two, three, four. Nine photos. I'll leave him with the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just had one question for the witness, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, you had mentioned diesel trucks. Could you elaborate further upon the size and nature of the diesel trucks in question?
There is one red one that appears to be very large. It's an older, I'm going to guess from maybe the 80s or the 90s. That is the loudest truck. It, when you, I can't describe the noise other than the engine is very loud.
Is it a pickup truck?
It is. They're both pickup trucks. He has a red one and a green one.
Diesel pickup truck?
Yes. Those are his personal trucks. They are not registered, to my knowledge, as a commercial vehicle. They do not have commercial plates. So, you know, keeping them parked in the backyard and then, you know, they've got the metal racks, not the wooden racks. They have the metal frames inside the back of the pickup where the ladders are going up and down, up and down.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak in favor or against this application? As the applicant is not present, is there a motion on the floor to continue?
So moved.
Second.
I second.
Second by Charlie. Discussion.
I went out to the property. The pictures don't depict what it looks like today. So if you haven't been out there, I suggested in the next, when it comes up again, you should go out. Under our block ordinance, the rule is, if you can't see it from the road, so you have to physically go onto the property to see. So I would suggest that you make the effort.
Thank you. All those in favor of continuing this application to our next regular meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Madam Chair, Madam Secretary.
Yeah. Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing. You don't need the first paragraph, do you? ZBA 2012-06-02, Thompsonville Fire District, applicant owner 11 Pearl Street, MAP 24, Lot 65, TVCZ Zone, a front and yard setback variance from 10 feet to 2 feet to place a temporary trailer, EZO Sections 410 and 5.1010.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, join my colleague on the other side of the table.
You may.
So we've started the process to.
Name and address, please.
Chief Alamo, Thompsonville Fire Department, 11 Pearl Street.
Assistant Chief Paul Neighbors, 11 Pearl Street.
So we've started the process to put a temporary trailer on the north side of the building. Everything should be in your packet. We went through Revite, and they voted for it. We went before council.
May. Could someone go open that door? Thank you.
We, continue? We went before council, meeting before last, to obtain a license. Unfortunately, we've been using some of their land, and it went back 15 or 20 years, and it was never recorded. Jose and I came across it when we started the application process. So for years now, we've been parking and using a piece of land that the town owns. So the council drafted a resolution. Unfortunately, hasn't been completed yet by the attorney's office, but the council voted 10-1 in favor of that process, which is for 18 months. It'll be renewed if needed. Hopefully, it's not needed. So this is the last step of the journey. We needed to get some variances. And this was the only place we could put it due to the way the land is and the size of the lot. If we tried to put it to the rear, we would have really been infringing on Corona's business. You know, it's tight back there now, and they're getting their products in and out. I think would have been an inconvenience, and we still would have needed a variance for setback. But, you know, granting a variance in the rear would have been, you know, impacting in a negative way, you know, a good neighbor that's been there for eons. So, you know, the best way, we thought, you know, between staff here and myself was to do these three steps, Revite, council, and before you, before this board, to do this. And I'm sure you've heard over the years the condition of the building. We have, you know, several safety issues in the lower level. So the men will be in the trailer. In this process, we're going to be making the North Stairwell code compliant. So they'll still be able to use the bathroom, shower, locker room. And basically, this is going to be where their day room would be, where they'll eat and hang out. So we're making an effort to mitigate what's a major, major problem, to comply to health, safety codes, and the fire codes, make our environment safer for firefighters to live in. So, any questions, I guess?
Questions of the board.
First off, I went out to the property. There was no public hearing sign.
Didn't know I needed one.
We can't hear the hearing until the public's been properly notified.
I don't know the answer to that. I, were we supposed to post a sign?
Didn't Jose give you a sign?
No.
And the property wasn't marked where the trailer was going to go?
It's in your packet.
But it has to be marked on the property. It's in your application. And I'm not trying to be difficult to.
No, I just, you know, going through the process with staff, they thought that what I demonstrated was sufficient.
Well, staff, if it's not Jenny, is incorrect. It's clear that we have to have markings on the property, either with paint or sticks or something, so that when the zoning officers, the ZBA folks, go out, they can instantaneously know where you're putting it. I saw your packet had a picture where you had cones on it.
Cones, right.
But you couldn't tell how, without physically standing out, you don't know how far this thing's coming out. So part of the problem is we're technically not supposed to hear the hearing until you've put the public hearing sign up for
10 days, not counting the day of the hearing.
I honestly wasn't told, so. Misunderstanding communication. I was working very closely with the manager, the town attorney's office, staff.
Which staff?
Oversight.
What staff?
With Jenny and with the secretary and with Jose. And everybody was going out of their way to help me through this process, and we all must have just forgot.
Well, one of the issues is, as Mary Ann has stated, the public has to be notified. And they're not notified. So we have no choice but to continue this. You have to do diligence, mark out the property for us to view, and get a public hearing sign. I believe it has to be posted for 10 days.
Part of marking the property would be marking the property that the council's letting us use. So I think I need to check with the manager if that's going to be okay.
Make sure you have.
It's not all our property that we're marking.
Make sure you have your lease agreement in place so you can properly mark it, or whatever kind of agreement you have with the town.
I have that here. It's just not completed yet.
Yep. Once that's completed and signed off, you mark out the property and get your public hearing sign up.
Are you going to be holding any special meetings? Because I think you're off now, right? After tonight, or?
No, we meet in July.
No, not until August.
Okay. So this is going to delay us a month.
This will delay you until, I think it's July 30, our next meeting?
Yes.
I know Jose knows. He gives sides out to everybody.
We all overlooked it.
It causes us a problem, Frank, and it's not.
No, I understand. You can't treat us any differently than you treat the general public.
Right.
It's not fair for you to say, you didn't put a sign, but we're going to hear your application tonight. But John Q. Public has to put up a sign.
Right.
I don't believe in that. I don't think it's fair. It's just that unfortunately, it's going to delay us 30 days. Or if you're inclined to hold a special meeting, you know, we could look at that. I don't know what the scheduling's like. I don't know what room availability's like. There's another whole process to do that as well, so.
Well, you do what you need to do on your end. When completed.
Tell Jenny, okay.
Let staff know. Staff will notify the board. We'll look at schedules.
Okay. That works. Just a misunderstanding. We are all working so hard on it, we forgot about the important thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, can I come back up?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Although the public hearing notice was not put on the property, a legal notice did go out. So I'm going to open up the audience to speak in favor or against this application. Is there anyone who wishes to do so? As there is none, is there a motion on the floor for a continuance of this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mary Ann, second.
Second.
Second by Andrew. Discussion. As there is none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Madam Secretary.
ZBA 2012-06-03, RB Realty Associate LLC, applicant owner 127 Pearl Street, MAP 022, Lot 0009, TVZ Zone, requesting a variance of minimum floor area for a studio apartment, EZO Section 4.3.7C, dated this 11th day of June 2012, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal Inquirer, June 13 and June 19, 2012.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to read you something that was handed to me. It's dated June 25, 2012, re-variance application, 127 Pearl Street. We would like to withdraw our application for a variance for this application to reduce the square footage requirement for an apartment. Eleanor Benz, Richard Benz, for RB Realty Associates LLC. Mrs. Benz is still in the audience.
So done. Okay. Application's withdrawn. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. In your packet, you have the April 30 as well as the May 21 regular meeting minutes. And so there will not be any confusion. Frank was seated at our May 21 meeting as a regular member and participated in the discussion and the voting. The question was proposed as to when our next meeting, who votes on the minutes of the previous meeting? And according to the town attorney, Kevin DeNeen, it is who was ever seated at that particular meeting. So unfortunately, Frank, although you were seated last month, you're not seated this month, so you do not get the opportunity to vote on this. You can discuss it, but you can't vote on it. So is there a motion to approve the April 30 minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Ann, second.
Second.
Second by Charlie. Discussion. As there is none. And Lynn, do you feel comfortable? You've read the minutes?
I've read them.
Okay. As there is none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of May 21, 2012?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Ann, second.
Second.
By Andrew. All those, discussion?
I have a couple of things. On page 442.
Hold on, what's the last paragraph?
The last two paragraphs. Just, I'm going to put it in a nutshell. Five of 42, paragraph 1, 2, 4, and 5. And 9 of 42, paragraph 6. This is all about the discussion of testimony entered from Mr. LaRosa about the safety concerns with this split-level and in-law apartment. I know we used one of the regulations for denial.
Oops. I know we used one of the regulations for denial, but we used safety. And there was a lot of information entered from Mr. LaRosa that he had discussions with officials. Just him. And I just, and I asked in the last, before we closed, I think it's on the 9 of 42, paragraph 6, if we should have something in writing from the local official just to make our case and make this clean. So I still have a little bit of a problem with, you know, an ex parte conversation going on from one of our members with, was it a fire marshal around a coffee table? Was he working in his official capacity? I just think maybe going forward, we should have staff notify whoever, whether it's traffic or fire, to go out there and look at it and get a little note, a couple, a page of what they found and what they think. Because just having one commissioner kind of like unofficially go speak to the fire marshal, we don't even know which fire marshal he spoke to. I just, like I said, it's a discussion that we all weren't privy to. And I just wanted to raise that. I mean, I understand we voted on, I think Commissioner Turner mentioned our regulations clear that they can't have those types of in-law apartments anyway. But part of the denial was the safety issues relative to what Mr. LaRosa had entered into the record. So.
I think the purpose of, and I can understand your point. But I think the purpose of voting on the minutes is whether or not there's corrections needed in the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Not to say, well, you know, we ought to implement this, or we ought to.
No, I just wanted to raise that.
I understand that.
And maybe for.
Voting on the minutes is not necessarily the place to do that. We can do that under general discussion or other business.
Okay.
If there's corrections or irregularities in the minutes, this is the time to bring them up.
No, they're accurate to what was said that night. No doubt about it. I just wanted to raise that for good of the order. I just wanted to raise that for good order. I guess we can put it under, I mean... Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes of May 21st, 2012, please signify by raising your hand. Motion's approved, five zero. Jenny, staff report?
Okay, a couple of things. You all should have the list of what's going on, what you've asked of me, what is coming up. I wanted to remind you that that mobile remediation company will be coming into the next meeting, the July meeting. And I'll make sure that I have in your packet the pertinent documents so you can refresh yourself and Lynn can familiarize herself with what's going on. Did wanna mention that Traffic Safety Officer is being made aware of the applications as they come in. I haven't been getting anything and his agreement with me was that he would send anything or call if he had concerns.
I'd also, I'd like to interject for a second because Frank, this is something that was brought up previously, as you had just mentioned. And it's the traffic study and it was, it's related to the golf course application. And so because of that suggestion, Jenny's now worked with the Traffic Safety Department and implemented that, so...
So probably on the same lines, what we were talking about, yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, he's so busy that I don't get documentation unless it's really pertinent. The 44 Oliver Road, I had been asked at the last meeting to let Wetlands and DEEP and Traffic Safety and the Fire Marshal aware of what had been going on, which I did. I also discussed it with Ray Stedward of the Building Department. He went over. Apparently, there had been a permit which had been approved for a gas line to go in there that I was not aware of. That was back in 2010 when he first moved in. So things are, I'm trying to work closer with the different departments, but things sometimes have a tendency to fall, not fall through the cracks, but not get to all the people that you'd like them to get to. So I'm just making you aware of that. It's good to have open lines. Couple more things.
Before we leave this document...
Okay.
I'm not completely clear on what's been accomplished on 44 Olive. You have notified the particular people we asked about? And the progress is what, who is this, Jay Lujak?
Jim Lujak is the new...
Wetlands guy?
Wetlands engineer, environmental engineer person.
Okay.
He is the liaison to the Inland Wetlands Agency.
Are you expecting them to respond back to you at some point? That that will also show up in here or did you just tell them and...
I asked Jim to make them aware. And I will look in the minutes. I don't think that I will be told. I will ask him to let me know. They haven't had a meeting in a while. I don't know that they will have...
Excuse me for a minute. Mr. Chairman, what is it we're asking Jenny to accomplish? Other than the fact that we wanted her to move on and forward the information to these particular bodies, are we of any interest to know how they've acted on it, if at all? I mean, what do we want?
My understanding is we can't set that as a condition.
Right.
I think in this particular case, Jenny can send out memos. She can, you know, make...
Make them aware.
Make the various departments or staff aware of what's going on. But for us to require that it be done, we don't have that authority.
So for her to report back would be no more than, "I have forwarded the XYZ letters to ABCD. They're in the file and it's closed unless there's a future." And then we can come back and say, "Well, we did our due diligence. We can't..."
Correct.
So that's, I just wanna make sure we're clear. We're just asking you to do, but we're not asking you to follow up or find out the outcome.
If something comes across my desk as a result of my first email, I will...
And we're all in agreement that that's what we want from this document we've employed? I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. Two other things. The certificate of completion is coming along very nicely. I did the Robins on Weymouth Road and today I did the Eagle Scout that did the shed on Prospect Street, the soup kitchen. They will both be in your next packet, just so you'll see what's going on. The last thing is, you'll probably hear me say continuously, is your mic on, is your mic on? The reason that it's important that all of you make sure your mic is on is there's just a little recorder that, and that's all we have to pick up all the pertinent information that you're putting forth. And if you don't have your microphones on, it's not gonna pick you up. Okay?
Okay.
And that's all I have unless you have something for me.
Any other, any, anything for Jenny from anyone else?
Maybe for Jenny. If it's appropriate. Jenny, Jenny does the packets?
Yep.
On 316, received an email from Jose, attached a letter from the town attorney to the chair, to all of us. It was supposed to be in our packet last month and it didn't get in. And it wasn't there this month. So I don't know, is it proper to give it to Jenny to put...
Is my name on that email, anyplace?
It was to all of us.
To all of you, is my name on there?
Sent. Right, it's from Jose to us.
Correct.
I was asked to forward you this attachment from the town attorney.
Am I part of the...
It will include, it'll be, a hard copy will be included in your next packet.
Correct. But do I, am I in there?
No, I don't know. I don't see it.
Then I would have no knowledge of it. You, as a group, need to remind Jose or at least forward me something so that I know if you want something in your packet.
Right, this was supposed to be, you know, that last month and it wasn't. So I brought it along. Do I give it to you? Do I give it to...
I don't remember what it is.
It's a letter from the town attorney outlining how we're supposed to address him when we use their name. And then the last paragraph was very important to what's been going on with the issue of the off-the-record discussions we've been having. The last paragraph was pretty strong and...
Okay. This, although there's not been a follow-up letter or a follow-up memo with respect to this, we have been privy to information and reported on it. I know that Mo had reported on the first issue you're talking about and it's in our minutes as well as the tapes. And I had reported on the off-the-record issue last month saying that I had a meeting with the town manager. The town manager was supposed to report prior to our, to the town council, prior to our last meeting, which I believe was May 25th or, or May meeting. He did not do that prior to our meeting, therefore I had nothing to report. I had sent him an email after our last meeting and received no response. So that's where everything stands.
Yeah, I know Mo reported on the top part, but he didn't talk about the last paragraph. I don't know if you wanna take this, enter it, or what are we doing? Because it was supposed to be in our packets and it hasn't arrived.
We haven't received anything.
Jenny, I'll put it in the material.
Okay.
And then you can put it in the packet for the next month?
Thank you, that would be good.
And we will be more cognizant if we receive materials in the future from others and you're not on it, I will, as Secretary, forward it automatically to the CEO.
Okay. I did wanna mention that Frank, it made me think of something. I am responsible for the packets. There has been a little glitch in the copying. So we're going to try a new way of doing it to see if we can get a little more continuity.
I know you like to save paper, but single-sided is a lot easier to read than double-sided.
Yeah. And I got a very good suggestion from Ray Warren on some of the packets he gets from some of his Springfield meetings. And I'm gonna try one of his suggestions on the next packet. You'll have to let me know as a group how you like it.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Other business. Anyone? I have one item. I've been made aware that some correspondence has gone out by a member of this board. And if that correspondence had gone out under that member's name as a resident of this town, then so be it. But that correspondence went out as, under the member's name, as a ZBA member. Unfortunately, other town departments were notified and copied on that correspondence, except ZBA was not copied nor was staff copied on that. So as a common courtesy, when correspondence is going out and you're acting as a member of this board, please copy the officers of the board and/or staff. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Charlie, we are adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.